Meeting tonight as in our authority as the VRD License Appeals Board. Our Chair is currently out of town. We do not have a Vice Chair, so I will be chairing this meeting tonight. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible).
Kate, may we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. So, tonight we have absent Patty Crowen and Josh Brainard, Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Ray McFarland.
Here.
Miles Schlesinger.
Here.
And Steve Griffiths.
Here. All right. It is now 6:02 PM. I am now opening the hearing on file APP 2019-02, an appeal of a decision of a Planning and Community Development Director denying renewal of a vacation rental dwelling license under LCMC Chapter 5.14 to Michael Barrett for the residence at 1440 Southwest Dune Avenue. The Director's denial was based on minimum rental requirements detailed in Lincoln City Municipal Code Section 5.14.080.E-7. Are there any objections to the Board's jurisdiction? Seeing none. Board members, are there any abstentions or disqualifications based on conflict of interest, personal bias, or ex parte communications? I need to report two ex parte communications. I was contacted by an individual within the past week asking if I served on the Planning Commission. I said yes. They then asked me, they asked me a question, and I said sure. And they brought up the appeal that we are hearing tonight, and I said, "I can't talk to you about that. Please do not inform me about it. If you have questions about it, contact the Planning Department or come to the meeting here tonight." And then, secondly, last night I was walking around my neighborhood, and I stopped at a realty firm in the Nelk Scott neighborhood and looked at a new sign display there, and I saw an ad for a property for sale, and I recognized the address. And it's the address for vacation rental dwelling that we're talking about tonight, 1440 Southwest Dune. Other than that, that's it for me.
So, you're not prejudiced or biased based upon those contacts?
I am not, no.
You'll make your decision based upon the evidence submitted in the record today?
I can. Is there any objection to the participation of any Board member? All right. The following is a list of the criteria that apply to this VRD License Appeals Hearing, and staff will now read the list of criteria.
Criteria is LCMC 5.14080 and 5.14090. 5.14080 is VRD license renewal standards, the second one being appeals of VRD license determinations.
All right. May we have the staff report, please?
Do you want me to go up there?
Yeah, why don't you come up here?
Okay.
Hey Weston, Weston, bring your name plate, too.
Just for clarity, when we talk about the requirements, the standards, the 080 basically in Sub E talks about the fact that all the requirements of this chapter have to be met. So, although Weston said, "Oh, it's 080," it's actually all requirements of the chapter.
I'll try to summarize this as best as possible. Just as a background, the appellant, Michael Barrett, appeals the decision of the Planning and Community Development Director denying a VRD license renewal application. In particular, the denial that was based on a minimum rental requirement detailed in LCMC 5.14080E7. The property, 1440 Southwest Dune Avenue, further identified as Lincoln County Assessor's Map 071122AB, tax lot 05100, as in the R15. So, this is from the city decision portion of the staff report. The appellant's renewal application was submitted to Finance Department on April 30th, 2019 as an electronic copy and as a hard copy in the mail. The email copy of the application was mistakenly approved by Planning Department on May 9th, 2018. Planning staff admitted they did not check the TRT receipts. This was an error. A license was then mistakenly issued by the Finance Department and sent to the applicant. Upon receiving the second copy of the renewal application, Finance staff flagged the application for detailed review. After checking and seeing there was no TRT submissions for the last year, Planning staff reviewed the application and checked with the Building Division to determine if there were any, there were open permits. No permits were on record for the county or the city. The planning director denied the renewal application as it had not generated the mandatory minimum income of $500 as required by LCMC 5.14080E. It had also not rented for the required minimum of 30 nights, as it is in a cap zone required under LCMC 5.14080E. So, in Section E 5.14080E, renewal standards, the city will review an application for license renewal and issue a renewal of the vacation rental license provided the following standards are met. This is standard number seven, which is the standard in question. The property has generated at least $500 from rental occupancy during the previous year, as demonstrated by transient room tax reports filed pursuant to LCMC 3.04070. The person responsible for receiving the transient room tax reports and verifying the amount of tax due will determine whether this standard is met by providing a summary determination to the department responsible for processing the renewal application. Where a cap is imposed, a new or renewal VRD license shall not be issued if the VRD has not obtained or maintained a VRD license in the preceding six months and the VRD has been rented at least 30 days in that license year. An accessory license may be issued to a VRD that does not meet the 30 days or more standard. Information provided by the owner under Chapter 3.04 LCMC shall be kept confidential to the extent allowed or required by the law. Whether innocent mistake or by corrupt design, city staff is not authorized to waive the mandatory provisions of the Lincoln City Municipal Code. Furthermore, LCMC 5.14080E does not list any exemptions for failure to meet the specific renewal standards. So, just to recap on the appellant's argument for number two, no staff member is authorized to waive the mandatory requirements of the Lincoln City Municipal Code. A participant in local land use proceedings must ascertain for itself from the local code what it must see to protect his rights. Reliance on erroneous information from local government employee does not relieve a party from complying with the statutory or local requirements. Can see loose leave of City of Salem. Recommendation, the staff recommends that the Planning Commission take public testimony regarding the appeal and determine if the Director's decision was an error. If the Planning Commission finds that the Director's decision was in fact an error, it should make an appropriate finding and uphold the appeal. If the Commission finds that Director's decision was not an error, it should make the appropriate finding and deny the appeal.
Is that it? Thank you. We'll have some questions for you. I think I'll start, if that's okay with you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you know when the appellant was notified that the renewal application had in fact not been renewed? That you were...
I can't remember the exact date. It was, we did notify the appellant via a letter that was sent to them.
Okay. But we, there's not a copy of the letter in the record, right?
Not in this, no.
Okay. And I just wanted to confirm, there were no TRT receipt submission for the past license year. What is the date of the license year?
I would have to look at our licensing chart. We have a chart. It's kind of confusing, the license year that it's issued is, it's a one year, but we issue them quarterly, and so there's a requirement for each quarter to be when they're received in, when they're late by, when the license is issued by, and what's considered late. And Finance is the one who divvies up those receipts and...
All right.
And they've broken it down into, into those quarters. But the license year would have been the year previous to, you know, the...
Each, I'm sorry, each VRD owner is assigned a license period, quarterly, one of the quarterly deadlines. So, if the statement from Finance was they didn't have any income for their license year, it's for their license year, whatever that may be.
Right, right. Okay. And...
The TRT receipts are in the packet, the, not the TRT receipt, but the TRT filing statement from Finance Department.
And it seems from the record, public record that was submitted, that the appellant notified the Planning Department that he was making renovations to his home. Is that correct?
Well, I do remember talking to the appellant's wife, maybe roughly a year ago, that they were going to be making renovations, and, you know, I don't ever remember saying that they would have total immunity from any of the renewal standards, but to explain that if they had made any renovations, that they'd contact us for reinspection afterwards to make sure that any renovations they do make still complies with the health and safety standard.
And did they make any estimates as to how long the recommendations might take?
I don't recall.
Okay. And is it correct the appellant did not take out permits for the renovations?
We have no record for any permits, both that were open for the city or the county. Obviously, there is a lot of work you can do to your home without permits. But there are some, you know, the appellant did also mention they replaced a couple of decks, which, judging by the photos on the internet, are above 30 inches, which would require a permit. But like I said, there's a lot, you know, you can paint your house, redo the floors, put in new countertops. You can do a lot of work without necessarily applying for a permit, but usually when, you know, you're doing an entire house renovation, that takes that long. There's some permitting involved, and just judging by the pictures, it looks like there could have been some permits that were supposed to have been taken out.
And so, rebuilding decks could be a violation of the code, correct?
Well, rebuilding a deck without a permit, it could be, yeah. I haven't done a visit to confirm if the renovations were complete. We hadn't ever gotten a request for a reinspection, so I haven't been on site to determine that or no one else has been, but just judging by the pictures, it would seem that if you're rebuilding those decks, they would need a permit.
All right. And we know that the house is currently for sale, apparently. Are VRD permits transferable to a new owner?
They are not.
All right. And the appellant's wife filed a report that no complaints were received in the past year? So, that would, in the past year, I would assume that to be the license year, correct?
The license year, correct.
Okay. And are VRD management companies required to keep records of complaints filed?
They are. But judging by the fact that there was no transient room tax receipt submitted, you know, I don't know why there would have been a complaint if the home wasn't rented at all as well. That's from what I understand, is that the home just wasn't rented for the past two years.
And does the city have access to those records if they want to see them?
The log of complaints.
Are they kept by the management companies?
Yeah, yeah, we can request that, absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
We, just to say, we do actually require they submit it with their renewal application, the log of complaints. So, I think it's in here. I think they mentioned that they had no complaints as well in their, yeah, they submitted their complaint log with that renewal application, and it did say no complaints.
Weston, are there, in this area, are they under a number of, X number of VRDs that are allowed? Are they within that cap, or is there a cap in that area?
There is a cap in that area. They would be in that cap.
Within?
Within that cap because they had an existing license. But due to that cap being there, there is a requirement that you not only generate the $500 in annual income, but you also have to rent your home for a minimum of 30 nights. And if you don't rent your home a minimum of 30 nights, you can get what's called an accessory license, which allows you to rent up to 30 nights. So, and that's detailed in that code section.
And they did not get a 30-day or less license for accessory use?
They have not. But until this appeal, the license was active until it was denied recently. So, that would be an option going forward, would be to get a 30-day accessory use license.
Any other questions? Thank you, Weston. Yeah. Is there anything you wanted to add?
Well, I was just looking through some of this. Like, a more accurate description of the license year would have been from end of May through, 2018 through end of May 2019, is what it looks like from their occupational tax permit.
Okay, thank you very much.
All righty.
This is the time for the appellant to testify. Your testimony is limited to 15 minutes, including rebuttal, but not including time answering questions from us. Who's, the appellant can come forward, please. And please state your name. No need to give us your address. Hello? Please speak directly into the microphone. You can pull it towards you.
Michael Barrett. Can you hear me okay?
Donna Barrett.
This is Donna Barrett, my lovely lawyer.
All right.
No, she's my wife, but she has a lawyer, and anyway.
So, your testimony is limited to 15 minutes?
Yep.
And that includes rebuttal time, but not including time answering any questions we ask you. Do you wish to reserve any time for rebuttal?
Sure, yeah.
How much time?
I don't know. As much time as I need for rebuttal, I guess.
Well, you're limited to 15 minutes, so why don't we say...
Oh, I see, including rebuttal. So, let's say 10 minutes and then five for rebuttal.
10 and five?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Try to get back to the Democratic debates as fast as possible.
So, we'll start now.
Are there any restrictions on what I can say?
I'll go ahead and say it, and I'll let you know if there are...
Okay. What I'm going to do is I'm going to start with a little history and a little background. I'll tell you all a little bit about ourselves, because we have a lot of history here, and then I'm going to get into the facts and directly address a couple of the things that Weston...
And remember, you have just 10 minutes.
Yeah, no, that's not going to be a problem for me at all. So, in the way of history, so we did drive down from Portland. We do own that house, but we have a long history in Lincoln City that goes back to 2003, 2004, and I'm going to share a few stories with you to try to keep it a little interesting, and then I'll tie it in later at the end of my statement. We moved here with our family. Our kids went to Taft High. Our older boys graduated from Taft High. Joel Barrett was the president of the student body at Taft High, which we're very proud of. We started the Lincoln United Soccer Team when we moved here, which is still in operation today. I went and raised, got the volunteers, the coach, the sponsors, and they competed all over the state of Oregon and took second place one year in the state of Oregon, which was really fun. And I also was the leader of the group of people that built the Taft High soccer field. So, I worked with a team of people that included Devils Lake Rock and Salmon River Contractors and the school district, and Bob Bamberick wrote a grant request for U.S. Soccer for $250,000, and we built that field there. So, I just want you to remember that so that when, whether you reject this thing or not, when you go to the field and you see Lincoln United in the newspaper, you remember us and you remember this hearing, because it provides a little bit of good context. We also were part of the Coast Finer Church, the leadership team at the time, that did the deal with Lori Hollingsworth and David Hocker on the land swap to create the Head to Bay Trail and moved the food pantry to up on the hill, out of the tsunami zone and up on the hill in Lincoln City, which again is still operating today. And I could go on and on, but we have a lot of history here, and I want, I'm sharing that with you so that it can be, if you're allowed ethically, so that it can be part of your consideration in this matter tonight. As far as the facts go, I can address one of them real quick on the deck issue. Had I known that Weston was going to look at Zillow Photos and research, you know, county and city records, I would have been more accurate in my description. We never tore down a deck and rebuilt a deck. We have three decks on that house. It's a three-story house with five bedrooms. And at a certain point in the history of managing it, there was a lot of, a lot of boards that had dry rot. So, any board that had dry rot was replaced, which was really our endeavor to comply with your requirements and to just be a good homeowner. So, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that's even the jurisdiction of Weston related to permits, but I can tell you on the public record, we never needed any permits for what we did. The second thing had to do with the story about the, well, I, actually, can I ask a question real quick? When was the law...
This is generally not a time to ask us questions.
Can I do that later?
Ask your question, go ahead.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
When was the law passed for the $500 per year and the 30 days? What year was that made a law?
Ask our city attorney.
Not recently.
Not recently?
Yeah, it's been in effect for years.
Two or three years at least?
No, the one that's more recent is the 30-day. That's the last two or three years. But the $500 has existed since we, I think, since we started this licensing program.
Okay. Well, that's good to know, because that's, that's part of the consideration as well, because as Weston pointed out accurately, we stopped renting the house to begin the repairs. The last, the last year that we actually did any rentals was 2015. And so, we were working with Tim Novak back then, and we were just calling, you know, small-town communication. We'd call him, say, "Hey, we're going to do this." He'd say, "Don't worry about it." We just had good rapport with Tim. We didn't have the chance to really get to know Weston yet, but that's how we operated from 2016, 2017, and 2018. We never rented one single night, and yet we paid the fees every one of those years, and we got the VRD license every single year. And so, we were operating based on understanding of what had been happening the prior three years, and in fact, they did it again for this year. And as, again, as Weston pointed out, they say they did it in error, but in truth, they did it in error almost four years in a row. And we've got the VRD license here that's valid through March of 2020, signed by Deborah Bridges. Don't know who that is. And we, after we did all of our repairs to the home, which took a few years, because we were doing it with cash, we never took out a home equity loan. We would just re-roof the house, wait a few months, and then we'd replace all the appliances, wait a few months. That's kind of how we went through it. That's why it took three years. We just contacted both Vacasa and Meredith to see who we wanted to use to represent our house, this, starting this year, and then we got the notice of denial after we got the notice of approval. So, yeah, and that was last month when we got that, and that kicked off this whole thing. So, I'm proud that I'm the first appeal hearing you're facing, but I think there's good reason for the appeal, based on all that history. And the last thing I want to say, kind of in closing, is please consider our history in this town and our service to the community, just like you. We never took a dime for any of it, and you're taking time out of your evening to be here and deal with this stuff. And we did the same thing for many, many, many years here. Please consider that. Lastly, unless you have something to say? Lastly, I would like the Board to consider honoring the VRD license that we did receive. Again, the fourth year in a row. Apparently, all those years were in error, but we did receive it, and we were operating in good faith based on that license. I would like you to consider honoring this license and give us until 3/31/2020, which is when this license expires, to generate the minimum of $500 and/or the 30 days, prove ourselves as good VRD owners in this community, and then award the license at that point or not, based on your criteria. And that's, that's the conclusion of my statement. Do you want to add anything?
The only thing at this point that I would add is the telephone conversations that I had with Tim Novak and the telephone conversations I had with Weston, I do acknowledge that they, because they were not recorded, they're hearsay and anecdotal. However, my recollection of those conversations is different than Weston, and his recollection of the conversations is also hearsay and anecdotal. But what is not hearsay is the granting of these VRD permits year after year after year after year. And to me...
And the fees paid.
And the fact that we continue to apply and pay our $200 every year, and apparently, according to Weston, we paid $200 twice this year. And I, I think that it's not hearsay or anecdotal, that we have the pieces of paper that granted us these permits. Because of my, I kept applying for these permits based on my understanding of the conversations that I had with Tim Novak and with Weston. And so, I just feel like to continue to take our $200 every year and to grant these permits, if they were not a part, if they were not in compliance, then it doesn't seem like it should be in compliance to continue to take our funds, to take our $200 every year, so...
Thank you. So, we have, so I turned to question you, and I'll start. So, you're saying that you've had a license for your VRD for the past three or four years, and you're, are you saying you didn't rent it during that time at all?
No.
And you paid no TRT receipts?
Yes, we've been doing renovations.
All right. And...
Can I clarify that we, we did it? Maybe it wasn't made clear. I had multiple conversations. Each time I had to fill out the application and pay my money, I had a conversation, you know, either with Tim or Weston. Like, we, you know, we don't have rentals this year. Is, is it okay? Are we going to be okay? Because I don't want to continue to pay for this...
I understand.
...application. So, that's what I mean about the conversations. They weren't recorded, so I can't prove that those were the conversations.
Okay. And also, you report that no complaints have been received, but the record, public record for this hearing indicates that complaints have been made to your management company. Did the management company inform you of these complaints and who made them? And when were the complaints made? What year, roughly?
I have the data on that, so I contacted the management company in preparation for this. I also saw the letter from a neighbor talking, complaining as if there was something recent that happened with photos and stuff. The fact is, there was one formal complaint back in 2013, and the story, there's a, I think, is that letter from the neighbor in your packet of information?
It is. It's in the public record.
So, that story that she articulates is true, and the photo is accurate, from 2013. So, that's not a recent story or photo. They don't even own that car anymore that's in their driveway. They haven't for a long time. And I got an email today from Vacasa articulating that that complaint was made in, I think, July of 2013. There were no complaints ever after that, and I forwarded that email from Vacasa to Weston today, and I asked him to include it in your packet.
He did.
Okay, great.
And I'll add to the answer as well. Well, at the time, Vacasa was having growing pains with being able to staff the proper people that they needed, and they acknowledged that with us. We, we made a very, very strong requirement of Vacasa to never rent our house to party people ever again and to question people, and they actually, at that point, started kind of looking up people on their social media to make sure that they were members, you know, members of their community, and they weren't going to, you know, they didn't have pictures on their social media of big parties and keggers and things like that. Vacasa actually changed their method of vetting renters for our house and probably for other houses, that's speculation on my part, but they actually changed the way that they vetted renters based on our requirements to tell them, "This is not a party house. If people want to have family reunions here and have multiple people here, that's fine." But indeed, after that, they did have a person who had paid their deposit, had, there are certain requirements with Vacasa that you can't cancel after a certain amount of time, otherwise you just lose your deposit or you lose, you know, however many funds you've already paid. There was actually a potential renter that wanted to rent the house. They reaffirmed with him in their confirmation phone call, "This is not a party house." And he's like, "What? I was going to invite all my, you know, buddies, and we were going to have a big party," and they're like, "Sorry, you can't have a party here." And they actually didn't even give him his money back. And he didn't rent because, he didn't stay there because that's what he wanted to do. So, that kind of problem was nipped in the bud right away, and it was not a... So, that kind of problem was nipped in the bud right away, and it was not a problem after that.
The incident in the letter that she describes was a nightmare. The police were called that night, there was trash on the lawn, there were cars parked on the lawn. I actually drove down myself from West Lynn and made those people clean it up myself, because back then, in 2013, I couldn't get Vacasa to do it. And it was terrible, and out of respect for our neighbors, you know, we made big changes to it from that experience moving forward. So, the letter that was sent just two or three days ago was very confusing to me, because it kinda made it seem like it was some sort of a recent thing or an ongoing thing, which neither, neither of those is true.
I have another question for you. Can you confirm that your house is for sale?
Yeah, it's for sale at a...
Can you explain why you're applying for a renewal permit if you plan on selling it out?
Sure, that's easy.
Plan on the house selling.
It's been for sale for about a year, and probably two people have looked at it, and nobody's even come close to talking about an offer, and it's just too expensive of a house, so it's probably not gonna sell. So, we want to protect our investment and try to get, get some rental income from it.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you very much then.
Thank you.
Mr. Griffiths?
Excuse me?
I just have two, two things to, to add.
Should we, is this the appropriate time to do it, or should we...
Well, at this time, if staff adds something, then the applicant may want to respond, but they reserve time for rebuttal, so they could do it during rebuttal, so...
Do you wanna, do you wanna add it now then?
Yeah, it's just a clarification on some dates. I, I have the, the original file here, and in going back through the renewal applications, I note that the renewal applications do not, meaning our form, the city's form, does not have a spot for answering the question about the $500 until the 2018 renewal. So, the renewals from 2017 prior to on that form, there, there is no place on the form to mark that box. Starting in 2018, there is a box that says, this property generated at least $500 from rental occupancy in the past year. And then, the licensure date for this particular one runs from April 1st to March 31st.
Anne Marie, was that box marked in either 18 or 19?
On the 2018 renewal, it was not. It was marked, it was left blank, and on the recent renewal, it was marked no.
I'd like to ask a question of Richard. We didn't have restrictions on the numbers of VRDs in that area until our recent ruling, did we?
What you're thinking of is that we imposed a cap...
Right.
Okay? Was it a year ago, year and a half ago?
A year or less, I thought.
In the R1 zone, so that's where the additional language was added about you must have 30-day rental.
Okay, that's what I remembered, I was trying to clarify that.
That was added to the provision that existed for the $500. This ordinance was originally adopted in 2009. I haven't been able to go back and look at the four or five ordinances that amended it, but my recollection is from when I started here, six years ago, it had a $500 requirement. It may not be on the form, on the checklist, but if it's in the code and it's a requirement, then, like I said, the renewal standard for your vacation rental license is, you know, the first criterion under 080 is complies with all the requirements of this chapter. So, you know, not everything will fit on the check-the-box form.
Yeah, I guess what I was trying to get at is there wasn't a, a competitive demand for renewal space until we put the cap on it. And so, those became a, I guess, a more lucrative deal after we put the cap on them. Is that a decent way of explaining it?
I think it becomes more important, but, I mean, if the code requires you to have $500 worth of income, no staff member's allowed to say, never mind, you don't have to do that.
Right.
Regardless of whether or not there's actually a cap, and...
Right.
Losing it means you're not under the cap anymore.
All right. Is there any testimony in support of the appeal? Seeing none. Is there any testimony in opposition to the appeal? Seeing none. Is there any additional testimony? Seeing none. All right. Now, is it time for the appellant's rebuttal? Do you, why don't we butt anything that's... You can...
Is there any evidence that staff said?
You've got a few. How many much time do they have?
Five.
Five, okay.
Well, rebuttal is for rebuttal. There was actually no testimony in opposition.
There was no testimony, so, yeah.
The only thing to be rebutting would be anything staff said.
Somebody challenge me so I can rebut it. Just, just a reminder on just what I'm asking for, meet me halfway, just honor this one. If you wanna deny it after March 31st, totally understandable, makes sense. And I'm not asking to sidestep the law at all, that would be inappropriate, but just honor the VRD license we did get. I realize it was an error, but we did get it, and we made plans based on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Give us a chance to be a good...
Create income for Lincoln.
Yeah, create great income for this city. We wanna create great income for the city, so...
And we're ready now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we have, make a motion to close the hearing and the record, can, can we, should we ask you any questions we may have before then, or can we do it after?
Legal advice is not evidence, so I'm not gonna give you any evidence after the close of the record. If you need any additional evidence, ask staff for now.
Not in regards to evidence, just in regards to...
In terms of applying the facts to the law, it's my job to help you with that if you want it. And I only talk about evidence in the record, and I talk about the law, which we don't have to...
Can I ask you about the law now?
It's always better to wait and ask me for legal advice after the close of the hearing and the record.
Okay. So, is there a motion to close the hearing and the record?
I move we close the record and the hearing for, no, the record? I guess, just the record to start with?
Well, if you start with the, close the hearing.
I like to, I move we close the hearing and the record for app 2019-02.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The hearing and the record are closed. All right, now's our discussion time. It's open.
You had questions?
I have questions. Could you tell us, Richard, about if staff makes an error, does, that does not relieve the party from complying with the code? Is that correct? And what...
Well, first of all, yeah, no, no staff members authorized to waive the requirements of the code. And the West, the language of Weston used was whether by mistake, which, you know, we all accept to be innocent, or by design, you know, fraudulent, corrupt. Staff decides to let someone go on, on a requirement, that's not permitted. And so, the decision-maker here, you, are not bound by a mistake. You're not compelled to repeat a mistake, so, you know, staff is not allowed to engage in the unauthorized exercise in their official duties to benefit or harm someone. That's called the crime of official misconduct, for which staff would go to jail if they did it knowingly. So, that's, that's the law, is that we don't, you know, you don't reward a mistake or a corrupt act by saying there's someone that's excused from complying with the law. You know, it's my understanding that it was made clear to these individuals that there was a mistake, 'cause they received the denial shortly after they got the renewal. So, I, I don't know that there's anything else I could say, other than the case law is pretty clear. If I'm standing at the planning counter and I tell you, you don't have to comply with the $500 standard for renewal, that's not gonna bind the city decision-maker in the future if someone says that, you know, hey, I relied on that, and I didn't, I didn't bother to rent. It's up to you to ascertain for yourself what's required to protect your rights. That's what's, that's why you reread the code, so...
Gary?
Can I ask you another question, just to find out if I can ask this question? Okay, I'm not asking the question, I'm just asking if I can ask the question. Do we have a list of people who are already actively applying for these VRD permits in this area? Can I ask that question?
You don't answer questions that provide additional facts, so I'm not gonna answer a question that provides additional facts.
You got your answer.
I didn't ask.
Miles, anything?
I believe in the rules and regulations, because VRDs have been mishandled over the years, but I don't see any reason that we should punish these folks. Their house is for sale, the license doesn't, isn't extended if they do meet the requirements, if they sell the house. So, I would let it go for this calendar year, and if they can't sell the house, or if they don't make the minimum payments to the tax collector, the VRD collector, then it won't be renewed next year.
Marie, do you have any comments?
There's a couple of things I was thinking about. I had some, some thoughts while they were testifying about, if you're not renting, why are you paying for this license? And what would happen if they came in as brand-new renters or looking to get a brand-new license right now? Would this be something we would grant in their area? Weston, do you know, if they have not exceeded the cap?
I don't think they can.
Wrong question.
No, wrong question, yeah. I think, my concerns are, I would prefer that we don't set a precedent tonight, and that while staff may, may have made an error, I think we need to enforce the code. So, that's where I stand on this. And I guess we're, our discussion is pretty much at an end, so do we have a motion to uphold or deny the appeal?
I'll make a motion to uphold the appeal.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, to deny the appeal, I used the wrong word. To uphold the code.
You, you're making a motion to deny the appellant's appeal?
Appellant's appeal, yes, to uphold the code.
Is there a second? Is there a second? I second. I second. May we have a roll call vote? Okay, but before we take the vote, so the motion is to deny the appellant's appeal.
Which means that the decision would remain that the license is denied.
McFarland?
Yes.
Schlesinger?
No.
Cunningham?
Yes.
And Griffiths?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Based on this decision, staff is directed to prepare a final order for adoption at the next meeting on Tuesday, August 6.
And I realize that's what your script says, except the code actually gives you more time, 'cause this is the VRD License Appeals Board and has a different timeframe, but we'll try to bring it back for that meeting.
Any other issues related to this? The meeting is adjourned. We will take a five, at least a five-minute break before we reconvene in our role as the Planning Commission.